You know, Chris.
There was a lot of.
Sabrina is you.
Please tell Chris I said hi.
Oh, yeah, 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 I did. All right.
I need your signature.
Even though I'm staring.
And you know, sad.
Good.
I think the reason for last year.
There.
Dialysis.
And very.
Great places.
And all kidneys are good now.
Correct. That's just saying you're officer of the organization.
We do need to scan.
Credit CDF. So I know obligation. All hands, my rest.
I have a pencil.
All right. So I believe it is four thirty in the afternoon. I believe we have a forum. So we'll call the April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Library Board of Trustees to order. Um, first item is a forum for visitors. Do we have any visitors sign in?
No.
No visitors. Alrighty, correspondence. Is there any correspondence to share? There's no correspondence to share. Consent agenda. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So move.
There's a motion and a second.
Second.
Do I hear any discussion?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, I just wanted to point out that I noticed in the personnel report that uh, uh, and yeah, uh, not Danielle. Delaney Harrelson uh, has left the library and that's a big loss. We were just getting ready, getting to know her better and spoke with her after the last meeting uh, for quite a while. So I do wish her well in her next venture, uh, but certainly a loss for the library.
Absolutely. Um, the only, and I would just add a comment as, as I look through the personnel report and appointments, I, I, I always struggle with this, trying to follow along and figure out who's on first and what's on second. And so it would, it would, it would be very beneficial if, and I looked through all the board docs that are available on the board book and, and there wasn't anything there that, that's satisfied my curiosity. And that would be to have a list, and I don't really care about the names, but of the, because we label them by number. You know, the number and the title or whatever, but then whether it's currently filled or open. And then if it's filled, what's the tenure? And if it's open, how long has it been open? And the title and the grade of those, each of those numbers, you know what? Just so we, because when I look at this, I'm trying to struggle to figure out and, and.
Do you want monthly? Because it will actually be part of the salary structure and role description.
Well, it, it evolves so quickly. I think if we had a, a document that got updated once a month, right before this meeting that was on the board book or something that, so you could go through. So when I look at this report, I can kind of match it up to see where we've got holes in our, in our staffing. You know, because like today I looked through this and we've got eight open positions is what it looks like to me. And if I read this correctly, the oldest opening is from July of twenty twenty-two. So is that accurate that we've got an opening that's been open that long?
Total positions.
Okay. Okay. Because then, then the other ones, you know, are relatively current for the most part, you know, I would expect that, you know, sixty and ninety days on a professional position is not unreasonable by any stretch of the imagination, but from July seems to be fairly long and I would assume it becomes difficult to do the job and keep things up to date. And, and if you can survive for that period of time without it, you begin to wonder, do you need it? And I, I don't want us to land in that position.
Yeah. I will say that is one of the positions that we struggle to hire exactly for the reason that we're doing the salary survey.
So you brought up salary survey. That's on my list. Um, I noticed in the, in the director's report that there was mention of, of that, um, that there was a Scott, Heather and Lisa met to discuss position descriptions and salary survey study, and it expects to come to the board soon. Do, do we have an ETA? Is there a work in progress? Do we have draft?
We are hoping to bring it to you in May. There's no reason that we shouldn't, um, especially bring the role descriptions so that they can be updated. What we're working on right now is trying to decide on that implementation schedule.
Right.
To be very frank, we're trying to see if we can increase pay immediately within this year and not have to wait for the budget year of next year.
Okay.
So that's, that's where we're at. And it really does come down to each individual and that total, um, and where, where we are in our budget. So we're working, we're about to be working really with Lori. Actually talked to her this week about it, um, to see if we could implement some of those pay raises quickly, um, for exactly the reason.
And implementing pay raises with the consent of the board.
Correct. Yes. But that's what we would bring to you in May. Yes.
And so that's part of my bigger picture is understanding this, this whole dynamic of all the positions, the shuffling that goes on and what's open, what's closed, how long have we had positions filled? What are their titles? Where the grades, where they are in the step system or whatever this new system looks like because I think to try to be responsible to my appointing authority, I, 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 I have to understand that better than I do today.
And that is all going to be part of that May presentation, which is our hope for you to not have it a week before you'll have it before.
So I did, I went, I scoured this time the board book because I wasn't gonna let you tell, call me out next time. And, and I scoured it and I couldn't find any of the information I was really looking for. Um, and, and I'll bring that piece up a little later, that some of the pieces that I thought would be helpful to have in there. And since we're on the director's report, um, the other item that I saw in there that caught my eye, and I don't know if anybody else is, is that preparing to do interviews for the security manager, April twenty-fourth. Do you have candidates?
We do.
We've got some candidates.
Have candidates, yes. In fact, Lisa is working hard on that. Now we've, uh, selected the candidates that we wanted to go through, uh, the first round of interviews and who we want to interview. We're trying, we've already blocked out days to begin those interviews and have an interview team together.
Okay. I've just, I'm, I'm hopeful that that one gets filled pretty quickly and that we have a quality person in that because that's, that's important.
Yes.
Um, then the last thing that I'll point out that I had a question about is in your report was, um, I, I, I read on about, um, Scott and Heather newly hired EVPL members introduce themselves to EVPL's onboarding sessions.
Every time we hire a new employee, um, Heather and I do our best to go down and personally meet him as part of their onboarding. And, um, we introduce ourselves, um.
So I guess.
About ourselves and about the organization, how long we've been here.
So, so my question is, is there a formal onboarding?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's about four hours.
Template of things that we do, that we always make sure every new employee gets their hands on.
Correct.
That every new staff member knows these are the things that you need to know.
Yep, it's four hours long.
Okay.
If we go down and we're fifteen minutes.
If you could do all that in four hours, you're very efficient.
Well, it continues past that. There's other training that goes.
Wait, I'm being sarcastic.
Yeah. Just saying.
But if we talk too long, it goes more than four hours.
Okay.
Joe.
Along the line of doing your onboarding, do you have the opposite? Like when somebody leaves?
Yeah, we do exit interviews as well.
Exit interviews. Okay. How's that typically run? I mean, pretty good, pretty smoothly. People cooperate and stuff.
Uh, I would say probably fifty percent, um, to exit interviews.
Yeah, it's a voluntary process.
Voluntary process.
They can choose to either do an in-person exit interview or they can just fill out a form. A lot of times people just fill out the form and leave it.
Right. Okay. And you know, especially the professional positions, um, I generally try and talk to them as well. I know Heather does as well for, but formally HR does it. But we do it informally.
Have you ever found anything alarming or worrisome?
Nothing that's, you know, for an organization to sign, usually the biggest thing, like all organizations are, says use of communication.
Right. Thanks.
But they do bring any concerns that are brought up to us so that we can address them or talk about them. Yes.
Okay, I wore myself out. Does anybody else have any comments or questions about the, uh, the consent agenda? Hearing none, there's a motion on four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Governance. Hearing on additional appropriations. That this? Just want to make sure I get it right. All right. So bear with me, folks. Secretary has presented proof of publication of notice to taxpayers of hearing on the matter of additional appropriation proposed to be made on account of the renovation and improvements to the North Park, Oakland and Central locations. In this form of affidavit of publication in the Evansville Courier-Press on March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, I would take a motion from the floor to approve the proof of publication.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Additional appropriation hearing. Library is funding this project through the issuance of general obligation bonds. State law requires all governmental units to hold an additional appropriation hearing anytime the governmental unit will receive dollars, which were not included in their annual budget. The bond proceeds are considered to be dollars received outside of the budget and therefore the library must hold an additional appropriation hearing. Notice of this hearing was advertised as presented by the secretary. I would entertain a motion to open for a public hearing, the use of the bond proceeds for this project.
I move we, um, open for a hearing on the use of the bond proceeds.
Second. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carry. Do we have any questions or comments from any taxpayers present and or the board while this hearing is in session?
For the record, could you just quickly go over the proceeds, the amount and what their, uh, flows be used for?
Would you like to answer that?
So it's a six million dollar general obligation bond, which will be used for the renovations of EVPL Central, EVPL Oakland and EVPL North Park. Details to be determined. Once we get the bond money and can move forward on design and work like that.
Give a payment term or estimated interest.
The, so we won't know the interest until the bonds are issued or sold, um, or estimating, uh, conservatively, uh, five percent. And the repayment terms would be six years. With no, um, change or it'd be a neutral, um, debt service tax levy.
Any additional questions from the board or the public? Or the staff for that matter? All right. Hearing none. I would like to entertain a motion that we close the meeting on the additional appropriation.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
In a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Additional appropriation resolution exhibit A. After the hearing on the additional appropriation, the board must approve the appropriation of the bond proceeds to be spent on the project cost before any bond money can be expended. Unlike appropriations of tax dollars, this additional appropriation of bond proceeds is not required to be approved by the Department of Local Government Finance. I would like to entertain a motion to approve resolution for the additional appropriation.
So moved.
There's a motion. There's a second. Do I hear any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Final bond resolution. Exhibit B. Ice Miller Bond Counsel on this general obligation bond of six million dollars has been consulted relative to the procedure to be followed in connection with the proposed bond issue and the rendering of an opinion approving the legal legality of the bonds. The final bond resolution has been approved by Ice Miller and recommended by them for adoption for the purpose of authorizing issuance of the bonds. This final bond resolution establishes the amount to be borrowed, maximum term of repayment and maximum interest rate. It also contains the details about the bonds, such as the form of the bond. The resolution also authorizes the publication of the notice of sale of the bonds and establishes the maximum cost and underwriter or bank may bid for the bonds. It is also establishes a bid committee who will award the bonds to the lowest bidder. This resolution also approves the forms of the first supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking, the registrar and paying agent agreement and deemed final certificate. The Securities and Exchange Commission requires that a library enter into a master continuing disclosure undertaking before it issues bonds. The library has entered into this type of agreement previously. It basically requires that the library agree to annually provide certain types of financial information to the SEC's EMMA database and provide notice of certain material events on a timely basis. I will entertain a motion to approve the final bond resolution.
I would like to make a motion to approve that. And I would also like to congratulate the president on his ability to elucidate those complicated terms so he will.
Thank you. I would like a second to Bob's motion.
Second.
Second. All those are, is there any discussion?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the final bond resolution, uh, the library, CEO, director, stewardship and governance officer, Baker Tilly, UNESCO advisors make up the bond committee. Is that typical? Uh, is that the group that's typically on the bond committee?
Yeah, but when we do that, we uh, still we're like last time, we made the recommendation to the full board to accept our recommendation of the little bit.
Okay.
So you do see that.
Okay, and we expect that to be the practice again.
Yes.
All right. Thanks. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I would like to entertain a motion to direct the secretary to advertise the sale of the bonds.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Job well done. Moving forward. All right. Finance report, Board of Appropriations, Lauren.
Actually, I'm going to back up to, um, five C resolution for depository delegation of system administrator. The, um, First Federal Savings Bank, who we currently have our checking account, uh, for operating fund and our flexible spending accounts with. They, um, have been implementing several new fraud prevention, uh, systems a, at their bank as all banks have been doing. And so one of the things that they have offered us, uh, as a service is a positive pay. And for those who who are not familiar with positive pay, it's where we upload our list of checks that we issue each time we issue a check. And then each time they receive one of those checks to cash, they, uh, look at it and see if there's any exception to the amount the payee or the date on it. And if there is, then they send it to us to determine if we want to go ahead and proceed to pay it, or if it's something that appears to be fraud and we need to reject it. So in order to do that, um, we had to sign up for positive pay system um, or services. And in that process, part of their official paperwork is to designate an immense system administrator. Um, so I'm going to just read the resolution since it explains it. Um, we have recognized the importance of internal controls to detect and detect and mitigate fraud. And whereas Evansville Vanberg Public Library Board of Trustees desires to utilize the bank's positive pay services as a detection tool. And whereas the bank requires that the Evansville Vandenberg Public Library Board of Trustees designate a system administrator, which shall have full and complete authority and responsibility for establishing access for the use of positive pay services by the Evansville Vandenberg Public Library. Now, the, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees designates a stewardship and governance officer as a system administrator that the bank may rely upon any and all actions taken by the system administrator or any designee of the system administrator that Evansville Vandenberg Public Library identifies, indemnifies and holds harmless the bank for any and all loss or damage arising in any way from activity or transactions conducted by the system administrator or any designee of the system administrator. And the Evansville Vandenberg Public Library will not charge the system administrator change it without providing prior written notice to the bank. And therefore be it resolved that the authority conferred hereby shall continue in full force and effect until written notice of modification or revocation of this resolution by duly appointed official of the Board of Trustees shall be received by the bank in reasonable time provided for the bank to act thereon. The bank shall be protected and acting upon any form of written notice, which in good faith believes to be genuine in what it purports to be. So it's basically saying that I would be the system administrator. And then I have designated two backup employees within the stewardship and governance office who also have access to, um, to our bank account for reconciliation purposes, that they would have the ability to respond to e, the daily positive pay.
So for purposes of discussion, I'll entertain a motion that we approve that resolution as presented. Uh, so moved. There's a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's a second. I think you answered the question. Was, is it payee positive pay? So you're going to upload not only the check number, the date and the amount, but the payee?
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to have to have the match on all.
Yes.
Okay. Um, because there, there's a lot of variance in positive payout there.
Yes. So the way their system, First Federal Savings Bank system works is they send us a daily email. Like we received one this morning. So we had no exceptions, no action required. If we receive one that says you have, uh, you need to take action on an exception, then we sign into the bank account. And there's a section where you, it'll tell you exactly who the check is paid to. You can look at it and see why it doesn't match is, and then we, from there designate whether or not it's acceptable or.
And what's their cutoff time daily?
Uh, they have to have it to us by nine AM, which actually we get it in the wee hours of the morning and their cutoff time for us to respond is eleven AM.
And what's the action if there's no response?
Then they pay it.
They pay it.
Mm-hmm.
So they have, excuse me, go ahead. They have an exception and if it's not responded to, they go ahead and pay it?
Mm-hmm.
Can that be changed to where they don't pay unless it's accepted?
We can dispute it after the fact, yes.
No, but on the positive pay saying, we haven't gotten to this, though you could fall back is default is don't pay it unless we approve it. That's usually one of the options you can do and it's a much safer option.
It, it wasn't an option that we could select. That's why I've designated two other employees within my office to.
So you'll, you'll have a process in place that if you're not going to be doing it, somebody else will get on it and look at it. So even if it does pay post eleven o'clock, whatever their cutoff is, you still have time to dispute it timely.
Yes.
If they get it at eight or nine o'clock, it's a two or three hour window.
Yeah.
It's pretty narrow window.
Actually, we typically get them like at two AM.
No, but when, when do people get in to look at it? At eight AM or nine?
Eight. Mm-hmm.
So it's a three hour window to look at.
Or like, or like me when I wake up at six o'clock, I check my email.
Here's a question for volume. How many checks does EVPL cut a week?
Uh, weekly, we cut very few, maybe ten. And that's because we only do early bills for utilities and other types of payments where we would be charged a late fee and or interest if it wasn't received on time. Otherwise we cut them all with the monthly board.
So I would assume that most of our payments are actually ACHed, electronic. We're not really cutting checks for much or do we?
Oh, no, we cut checks for everything.
Okay.
Unless it's a credit card charge.
Payrolls.
Payrolls ACH, yeah.
Which would be the bulk of the checks.
So I do like ten checks a day, so twelve, two hundred checks.
Ten checks a week.
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 And then, and then the ones that are in your about eighty, eighty to ninety, so about a hundred a month.
And are they charging a fee for the service?
Uh, ten dollars.
Ten dollars per month. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. I don't see the bank identified in the resolution. Does that matter?
It's not in the event that we would switch banks and then.
Authority to be that person regardless of the positive.
Correct.
Okay. So what I just heard you say is this resolution is really bank independent. It is a resolution from the board giving you that authority regardless of who we happen to be banking with at the time.
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions?
Uh, just real quickly and on the side. So what security we have for the ACH disbursements? Is there a limit on them?
Yes, we have a limit on the AC and we said it's about the same amount that we issue payroll for. And anything else has to have special consideration and we have to contact the bank and we have to sign off on anything that's outside of that limit.
As a daily limit or something instead of a, is it vendor specific?
No, it's for us as a total. We only ACH payroll twice a month unless we have three pays. The only other time we ACH is when we receive our tax settlement in June and December. And I ACH the tax settlement portion that is Willard's to their bank. And I have to make a special concession, contact the bank. They have to give me a clearance for that day to, because it exceeds the amount that our limit, which is set right at the top of our payroll.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Well, you got another job now.
Yeah.
Good job to you. Um, finance report.
Okay. On the finance report, then, uh, you can see, uh, we have, um, uh, still quite a healthy balance left in our appropriation balance for the month of March. And I will get a little bit more in detail when I do the quarterly update of the budget. The investments and balances for March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three for all four funds invested in the, um, state investment pool trust Indiana is thirteen million, seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. You can see our transactions listed on that report as well. The March average daily yield is four point six four seven two percent or up two tenths of a percent since February and the average daily yield year to date is four point four nine two zero percent or up, uh, almost seven hundredths of a percent since February. Bob has invoices.
Okay, thank you.
Approval of bills. All voices.
There we go. Um, you should have in front of you the invoices and payroll for the period, uh, for this meeting. I would ask that the Board of Trustees do improve the invoices, payrolls and payroll deductions in the amount of four hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventeen cents for the period from and including, uh, March eighth through and in April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. First payroll for March on March tenth in the amount of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and five cents. And on March twenty-fourth of four hundred and eleven thousand dollars, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-three cents.
This is in the form of a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Quarterly budget status update.
So to give you a little bit more information about our budget as of the end of March, in your package, you'll see a more line item detailed of our expenditure appropriation budget with the revenue that we've received in the first quarter of the year. Under the revenue section out to the far right, I have listed the amount that of our budget order or seventeen eighty-two notice, which is our certified amount. The next line is then the difference between the certified and the actual. And then the third column or the very far right column is the anticipated revenue. The anticipated revenue will change in the second quarter in the month of hopefully April, if not the very beginning of May, when we receive what our circuit breaker tax credit or tax cap reduction is going to be. So right now everything is as was, uh, certified. We're still anticipating that amount, but we know we're going to receive close to two million dollars in circuit breaker tax credit reductions or tax cuts for this year. Under the expense areas. If we took this on a one twelfth expenditure rate, which is not how we actually operate our budgets, but if we were, um, everything's, uh, going well according to the percentage of budget remaining. Couple areas where we've already expended more than one quarter is in our office supplies and our program supplies, uh, partially due to the increase in all supplies. Uh, toner cartridges have exceeded highs that we've ever had to expend and, um, with the new types of printers that we have, we're constantly having to re, um, supplier replenish those ink cartridges and they're, they're quite expensive. So we're keeping our eye on that and we're trying to make sure that all of our locations and all of our departments are using the cartridges they have on hand and we're not hoarding or stockpiling in, in any one location. So if they do have a change in printer, we're not, um, out those print cartridges that were previously purchased. Another area, um, that is a little bit on the low side, uh, from this particular report would be our cataloging and authority control. And in, uh, actuality, if you look at what the expenditures are, we used to pay on a monthly basis to have the cataloging records, uh, produced. And the OCLC is the group that we pay for this. They now bill us on an annual basis. So even though it looks like we've expended the majority of our budget, we wouldn't have that monthly charge moving forward. It was all expended at the beginning of the year. Uh, we're still on target in that area for year end though. And that, yes.
I was just going to ask if you could talk to like, uh, natural gas and then our boiler inspection. Natural gas has been around fifty-three percent.
Yep. That was my next one I was going to hit. No, you're fine. That's fine. Um, the other one that I highlighted in red was the natural gas. Uh, that was partially because we had those couple of cold snaps, uh, after the first. Uh, that was partially because we had those couple of cold snaps, uh, after the first of the year. And also natural gas prices have gone up. So that's why i- at this point in time, looks like we've expended a. Large chunk of that budget. When it comes closer to the end of the year and after we go through the summer months when we're not using as much natural gas, we're using more electricity because HVAC. Uh, will increase during that point in time. We'll take a look at where we're at. We can always, um, transfer money in between those two. Types of.
Does EVPL, like, do you pay the metered rate, the market rate? Buy your natural gas. Ahead of time. Like, uh.
That was a good question. I was wondering too.
If you take the price. We, yeah, we set a price at a certain time and we buy.
We're not big enough fish to do that.
Well, maybe we could, uh, get together.
Deca therm usage, you know?
I don't know off the top of my head. We get, um, I don't know. Do you recall from our last consultation with Train Lamont with that number ones?
I don't even know what a decotherm is.
It's a equivalent, it's a bunch of gas, what, equivalent to one million BP.
All right.
We do, we do have semi-annual. Semi-annual, is that the right word? Uh, to, uh, consultations with Train, uh, harsh, it used to be Harshell Train, now it's Train, um, who oversees our controls. Of our HVAC systems and so they, they will come in and let us know how much we're saving. Um, in different area, whether it's electricity or it's the natural gas, how much we're expending. And if we have problem areas, how to optimize the, uh, the operations of our HVAC systems throughout all library locations.
You're probably right about not being big enough fish on any individual location, but I think if you aggregate all of your locations. You might be able to, uh, get a fixed price where you can lock in the price for a whole year.
It's looking into at least.
Yeah.
You know, later I could maybe give you some guidance on that. I've done that. Multiple times. If you're interested, you know, but.
I think it saves money.
Have to know your usage.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm, you know, Rick obviously knows it from the school corporation, how they do it, so.
We can start by bringing it to building and grounds committee since you're on the building and grounds committees. And then if we want to bring it further on that information to the board. We can make sure that happens.
This sounds good.
Train has offered to provide different types of reporting for us.
Successfully. Maybe could there be some kind of thought of you?
What was the other area that you were?
The, uh, boiler inspections, uh. Boiler inspection, backflow maintenance.
Yeah, so if you look at that in that little cluster, you've got the, um, boiler inspection, backflow maintenance. Uh, security monitoring, uh, security monitoring is billed quarterly, but right underneath that, the facility maintenance agreement. Which is it down to forty-three percent and then the boys, we pay those maintenance agreements in whole once. At the beginning of the year.
Got you. And I would assume boiler if. Still have many, many. Well, you probably do, but, uh, that they're inspected once a year. Is that what it is? Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Lori? Are you done? You got more?
No, I was just going to say, uh, if you look at again by one twelfth comparison, uh, we're actually five percent higher than if. We were on our target of seventy-five percent, but again, that's hard to gauge when you've got a lot of. Agreements that are paid at the beginning of the year or once a year, maybe later in the year. Uh, so we're still tracking that as we go on a monthly basis as well.
I've always, these reports are always good, I think, for gauging where you're at. For certain line items.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we ought to highlight these are line items that are, that are meaningful when it comes to. That are spread out. Any other questions for Lori? Hearing none. Other business employee handbook addendum, Lisa.
Okay, the, uh, remote work, work from home policy was approved in August of twenty twenty-one, um. At the time of approval, it was not added to the handbook and because of that, we did not remember to put it into the latest revision of the handbook. Um, and since it has been almost two years since we originally approved and have, we, so we reviewed it, updated it, um, just made one minor change actually. And added it to the handbook as an appendix. Uh, request the board to approve the remote work, work from home policy and formally add it to the employee handbook as a appendix H. Dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Do I hear a motion? So move, second?
Second.
There's a second. Discussion or questions?
I do have a question, uh. I think as I look at this, it's a, it's essentially not changed from what was approved before.
Correct.
It just, when we did the la- that update to the handbook, it just.
Yeah, the only change we made was, um, on page one, the eligible job categories because they were so specific to titles. We just made it more of a, uh, department type. Um, administration department managers, executive, executive leadership, for example, instead of having our titles on there. With the anticipation that some titles may change. Yeah, exactly. Then the document's old already.
Uh, do remote workers get? Equipment provided to them, computers, whatever, unless they need to do the job at home?
If it's a situation that they're out more than a day or so, um, then. Most, a lot of the people that do get to work from home do already have laptops.
Correct.
The laptops are all the trouble you got. Not desktops, not mobile screens.
Correct, correct.
And only on an as needed basis, not a every Monday and Tuesday, you'll be at home for the thing.
There are some situations where like a medical reason, um, that they could work from home and of course, if it's a situation that we can still utilize them as a worker. Then, um, sometimes a medical reason would be the most of the reason why we would do any extended period of time.
But it would be in a specific, so we have a form that goes along with this that you fill out. I don't know if that was.
It's on there.
There you go.
So the back page.
So that would be listed there that for, let's say, three mi- months of a time. Perhaps you're working from home Mondays and Fridays due to said reason and it's signed off, but then you have to come back fully to work at the end of the period.
Is there a cap on the number of? The length of time one can be out in that cat, particular category?
We haven't had to yet. We honestly have not had very many people use this, uh, quite frankly.
That's what I was gonna ask. What's the percentage of work?
We have a few people a year that do it.
That do the formal agreement.
Formal agreement.
Often like a, a one-off, like a one day or something like that. It's not a formal agreement of a. A one day here, not one day per week is what I'm saying, right?
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to beat it up. And I think everybody asked all the questions I had written down there. However, the one, the one thing that I didn't see in there that. Was the number one, supporting somebody working remote equipment wise, that, that we wouldn't dispatch our team. Our IT people to their home to fix something or work.
We, that's never came up. Um, that's not something we actually thought about, nor did the.
So it's something to consider.
Yeah.
Um. And then the other one is a requirement that they provide a certain level of throughput. So that the work while they are doing it online is efficient. I, I, for example, when I work from home, I'm not as efficient. Because I don't have the throughput. Um, yeah.
Yet.
And, and I will tell you, Eric, when the one time I can recall when we sent someone home to work from home who like lived in the county. And didn't have high speed internet, we sent a hotspot home with them, so they had.
So see, so there's, so there's, there's an addition there that's not mentioned in here that, you know, we're providing something else.
We do provide equipment. I mean, that's true. Like, if I'm working from home.
But that, but that doesn't include a hotspot and all the costs that it goes, that go with that.
Sure. But it is one of our already, like, we already have those hotspots.
And I, I'm not opposed to remote work.
Additional, we should say not additional. Yes, we don't get.
Yes, since we already have the hotspots, that makes it to our advantage.
Right.
Yeah.
I have, I have a question, uh, so for example, say it's, uh, snowing out real badly. Uh, is that a situation where somebody might say, can I work from home today because I don't have the ability to get in? Or, or what's in the typical?
So in that instance, if it's that bad, we're probably closing and no one's working, like in general, right? Uh, I mean, we're probably working, but.
But, but for the most part, if it's a snow day, it's a paid day off.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. So weather usually is going to be covered. Because we're going to be closed or we're going to have a late opening or whatever. We have not had that issue. Come up where anybody has to work from home for that reason.
And we have situations, um, uh, some parents, for instance, their kids and they, their child's sick. And, you know, even though we have a great sick leave policy, we have employees that have work they have to get done. And so, uh, we will allow that. So that person's at least working and able to stay home with the child at the same time.
I will say that since we put this policy into place, which what was that, did you say, uh, August?
August twenty twenty-one.
Uh, twenty twenty-one, the people who have utilized this policy. Actually produce better and higher quality work often from home than they do in their offices. Um, and are more efficient, honestly. That is what my experience has been of the people on my team who have done this. And have utilized.
And what, what mainly started it was right after COVID and a lot of parents had to stay home with their children for the, the schooling and et cetera. And so then once that went, everybody went back to school, then we had some situations where people were asking and that's when we put the formal. Policy in place and very, very low use. And if anything, it's more just a day off here and there.
No, it's, it's very much part of the post-COVID world.
Yes.
And the fact that we have it addressed in this format, I, I applaud you, so. Any other discussion?
Does anyone from outside, well, using, working remotely access? Computer information of a sensitive nature, taking financial information? And if so, do we have any like security in place?
So if they, so your staff, if you were working from home, well, usually I think you would definitely be VPN it.
Yeah, we have to VPN.
It's a VPN.
And then we have dual authentication.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Multi-factor authentication.
You guys are. Working on a Saturday just because, you know, you're just trying to catch up on your work or executive staff or whatever. You don't. Put in forty hours. We probably put in sixty, you know, at times.
Correct.
So it's probably no different than working from home on a weekend. As far as accessing information, I'm assuming.
Everybody has, uh, multi-factor authentication, uh, to VPN and you have to VPN. You can't just access any.
Everyone with VPN.
Yes, not everybody has.
Not everyone has VPN access, so that I want to be.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Correct.
Yep.
Yes.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
They probably have VPN access.
Oh, I don't.
That would be a bright question.
Brett's not here. We actually just went through, we just went through that and actually made sure that it was.
Digits double, double them.
I mean, it's double digits for sure, but I mean, because if you just took it double digits, just all of this and.
Your management positions, your, your exempt management positions would, um. For sure. And then, of course, administrative staff.
At some point you may want to have, if you have a lot of people doing that, maybe think about not even VPN because it carries a hole in your. Wall and you want to maybe have a different system set up for those people at home.
We're actually discussing, we're working on a segmented network as you speak. And we do have a private staff network already, especially on our wifi. We have a staff wifi, but they are working on so many, the, the network as a whole too.
Any other questions? Good debate. All those in favor, speaking of Papa saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Announcements. Let me real quick, the other item that I was for the board book. Before I get too far, I'm on my notes here. I'm throwing stuff all over the place. File was it in? Well, I will tell you, I remember what it was going to be. Um, in addition to that employee information that we were talking about earlier. What I did not see were any of the, the policies of the EVPL other than those that are part of the employee handbook. The. There was a electronic. Meeting policy and a post-COVID event policy. So I, I assume there are other policies because I know we've talked about them other than those. I think those would be very, very beneficial to have in there to be able to refer to fairly quickly.
They're under the documents tab on.
I couldn't find them.
So there's multiple folders. I'll go back and under documents.
There is a, oh, well.
Uh, you know, it's, it, a lot of the policies are under governance.
I go under the bus again.
I will state, however, that other than internal policies, all of our public facing policies are listed on our website in entirety, in their entirety. But it doesn't look like all of them actually are on here on board book, probably because they're online, probably because they're online. But if you go, even if you scroll, I'm just gonna show you right now. If you scroll all the way down to the bottom of the website. There's library policies right here and every one of them is listed, scroll.
So the only policies that we put on the document section of board book are those that apply to the board that aren't public facing.
There you go.
So, but, and, and I get what you just said, but wouldn't all policies apply to the board?
We can put them under, under the policies.
Wouldn't the board want to know what all the policies?
They can be added.
I'm creating the public facing policy folder right now.
You're awesome. All right, um. Announcements?
Yes, um, just briefly, uh. First one is, uh, here at Central today, it was. A lot of people in here, not only did we have the legal women voters, um, Merrill candidate form. We had two different tours, one of, uh. Um, I think about middle school age.
They were first graders.
Were they first graders?
They were first graders. They were first graders.
Hey, it's kids. I'm not a children's librarian. Yeah, that's not me. Those are big first graders. People over there to do that. And then we also had USI students come through as well. It was about a hundred and twenty of them when you totaled them up, which was great. Um, the other thing I wanted to do, um, quickly here and publicly is commend the leadership team and the administrative team who's been working really hard on doing all of the. Bond, um. Leg work and getting the McCullough project rolling, including the McCullough staff and. Um, the facility staff, um, obviously Heather and Lori have been doing the behind the scenes heavy lifting on a lot of this stuff. So I just want to publicly commend them because right now, as it stands with your approval today, we've got. Four of our eight facilities, well, nine if you count the annex. Ready to roll with getting renovations to take us into the future to serve, um, the citizens of Vandenberg County. So just really wanted to commend them for doing that because they really have been working hard behind the scenes to get all this done because. It's a lot of hurry up and wait and a lot of frustration trying to get the right information, to get things through to make sure we have all the answers for you folks.
Well done.
You have other announcements. Policies in that folder right now for you.
Yeah, let's see how fast that. Now I gotta go read them.
That's all I had.
Thanks, Scott. Other announcements? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.